Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, ma'am. Do you hear a motion for approval of the agenda?
So.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Give a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recognition. Student representative to school board, if you'll introduce those, Mr. Dean.
Madam Chair, members of the board, following your all's approval of the policy to have student representatives, we have our two new ones. And first, student representatives from Lee High School. We have Mr. Riley Crabtree, and from Thomas Walker, we have Mr. John Frederick. We're really glad to have them. Everybody I've talked to at both schools, of course, I've known Riley for a good while, but both are really admired and respected in their schools, and we're glad to have them. And I think that they will add a lot and give us a student perspective on the things that we discuss. So there's a spot here a little while for them both to talk, and I think they both have something for us tonight. So we're glad to have them. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize them.
Welcome. John. Next item, Lee County, May 10.
Madam Chair, I believe we have Miss Roop and several other members here. I don't know who's going first.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Kennedy. So I've been one of the original mentors with the Lee County Robotics Program since we got started about four years ago. There was an initial fifth year there that was kind of an unofficial year. So some of us have been doing it a little longer. And we've got several of our students here. Guys, go ahead and line up up here. We've got several of our students here. I'll let the other mentors introduce themselves, and then we'll let these students talk a little bit. Yeah, I know they are.
Hello, I'm Davis from Lee. I was a first-year mentor for both R&amp;D and MATE. I am a superior technician for Lee County Public Schools, and I helped oversee the overall build process for both teams and helped out with trumpet shooting and electronics.
I am Laura Roop. I was a first-year MATE and robotics coach, and I continue to do so this year. And I'm currently part of CRT for the division. And I was over documentation and the aspect of publicity for the group. We had two middle school teams, and they were representatives from Pennington Middle School and Jonesville Middle School. And they completed in the scout division, our red team. They placed first overall, while our golf team got second. So we were very, very proud. They knew the assignment, and they brought it home. And then our high school division, who are representatives of Lee High, they participated in the ranger division, and they won third place in regional. And they went on to a world competition that was held in June.
I think time to let some of these students talk a little bit and tell you what school they go to, what their name is. You guys probably want to turn around so your parents can take your pictures. I'm sure they'd like to see your lovely faces. All right, Atlee, we'll start here with you.
I am Atlee McAllister. This is my second-year MATE. I am in the 10th grade, and I am a prop manager and tether manager.
Hello, my name is Gavin Young. I'm from, I'm in the sixth grade. I'm from Pennington Middle School. Some of my jobs were head of documentation and graphic designer.
I'm Luke Young. I'm in the ninth grade, and I go to Lee High. And some of my roles was I was the ROV pilot and safety manager.
My name is Jonah Warner. This is my first-year MATE. I go to Pennington Middle School. I'm in the sixth grade.
I'm Levi Jones. I go to Jonesville Middle School, and I'm in the seventh grade.
I'm Renton Britton. I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Lee High School.
I'm Kai Britton. I go to Jonesville Middle School. I'm in sixth grade. It was my first year in MATE, and some of my jobs were graphic designer and tether manager.
My name is Bentley Goforth. I go to Jonesville Middle. I'm in the seventh grade, and I did documentation and tether.
My name is Carson Elliott. I'm in the sixth grade. This was my first year in MATE.
My name's Chance Wright. I'm in the seventh grade. I go to Jonesville Middle School, and this is my second-year inmate.
All right, so some of you have heard us present before at these meetings, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about what this robotics program is. So this is called the MATE program, and MATE is for Marine Advanced Technology and Engineering. And it's basically an underwater robotic competition. So these students basically set themselves up like a company, and they have division of roles. And so some of them mentioned some of the jobs that they had, so that was their job in the company. And they designed an ROV that would go underwater to perform certain tasks, to score points. And that's only part of the competition. That's part of what we call the product demo in the pool, where they represent what their ROV can do. However, there's also an engineering presentation that they have to stand in front of a panel of judges and kind of sell their product. So their product is their ROV, and they're standing up there trying to convince these people that their ROV can do exactly the task that it was designed to do. So I'm going to let them tell you about some of the challenges that they faced during our competition season, whether it be from the build or the competition itself. So I think some of them have prepared a few things to say. Uh, yeah, you want to turn around, come over and tell the boards?
We've had many problems, like with our boards. We've done many soccer problems. We had to, uh, comment about it?
We ended up with three boards, and we end with one of our teams, one of our teams.
Yeah.
In the middle of the competition, whenever we were making our frames for our ROV, we built it way too late. And whenever we were getting our club set up, it was really hard to get the wiring hooked up and like working on our circuit board. And so we had problems with that. While we're at the competition itself, like after we got the claw working, it was perfectly fine, but as soon as we got it underwater, it stopped. And we had to use a, from pretty sure you're about right, ROV.
Atlee, do you want to say something about your all's team?
We had to ground most of our wires due to strict safety precautions.
Yes, when they went to Worlds, Worlds has a little bit of stricter safety precautions with the whole build, the electrical build, and the frame of the ROV and everything. So once they advanced to the next level, they had a lot more work to do. Like, do you want to talk about some of the time y'all had to spend in the pool this summer?
This summer, we went to Lehman Field to practice driving our pool and stuff. And we got about like 100 hours in the water before Worlds.
Before June, after May and until the third week of June, I think it was. But at this time, I think we have some flags to recognize our students for their hard work in this season, and we're looking forward to another season coming January and February.
And we have some students out tonight because of sports or taking a family trip. Atlee McAllister. Wesley Honeycutt, he is a ranger. He was absent today.
He is our senior this year, so this will be his last year, but he's been with us for a long time.
Clara Cox, she is playing volleyball tonight, I think.
Yep.
Luke Young. And that, that is our ranger team. Now, we're going to represent our scout team. Dylan Blevins is absent today. Chance Wright. Wyatt Gerth is absent. Carson Elliott.
We had a rather large group of middle school students this year. And so there were actually eight brand-new members. We had three returning members on the middle school team. So that was a challenge in itself, just for us mentors.
Gavin Young. Jonah Warner. Professor Renton Britton.
Thank you.
Noah Flannery is absent tonight. Levi Jones. Kai Britton. Bentley Goforth. Now Bentley can adapt anything. You give him a task, and he will make it up if he has to. He's our MacGyver. And Christian Bruce, who is absent today because of sports.
We would like to thank the school board for representing us all of these years. We would like to ask if anybody has any questions.
For the world competition, where were all the teams from?
Around different countries. You had like Hong Kong, Germany, I think London, Scotland.
A lot. About, I think there was 20, 23 countries that were represented there at the Worlds in Kingsport, Tennessee. So that's the second time they've actually held a world competition. It's interesting. If you ever get another chance to go, you know, it's a wonderful thing to see. All these parents come together. But we do definitely thank you guys for always supporting us every year, and we hope to continue to grow the program.
What is the world this year?
This year, it's in Michigan. And they did have the privilege of going last, the summer before last, to Colorado.
And this year, the Kingsport.
This year was Kingsport, next year Michigan.
I apologize. I missed the Kingsport. I left the date.
Vacation too.
I just really felt bad, and I want to apologize because we're really proud of you.
We do appreciate you.
We are proud of you.
If you've never been, I went to two previous years when they had it, East Tennessee State. I was going to a wedding when the world was at Kingsport. But it's, it's an interesting competition, and you ought to go, if you get a chance.
It's, it's a lot of work, yeah. A lot of work. You don't realize building something that's going underwater from the ground to circuit board, it's all a work.
And I think some of those other teams have sponsors from different places, don't they?
Yeah, lots of sponsors. We have sponsors too. Most of our shirts are represented with all the sponsors that we get each year. So we have quite a few local sponsors that do support us each year.
But we're very proud of you all.
Yes, very proud. Just keep us informed, and if we can make it somewhere, we'll try our best to do that. Just want us to stay. Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment? No public comment. We'll move on. Is there any board comments?
Two here. I would like to congratulate the Lee High Golf Team, who won the regular season, the district, the regional, and now on Monday, they'll be playing in Floyd County for a second straight state championship, potentially. So I want to congratulate those folks. Want to welcome the student reps, you'll see. And I want to say, I know that, I know all the people involved. I know that some of the faculty and some of the community in Flatwoods collected a lot, and I'm talking about a lot of water and just all kinds of supplies. And the first day, they took a truckload or two truckloads down to Newport. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, they literally took truckloads and trailer loads over to Herbal. So I want to congratulate them, and they collected the food at the Flatwoods School. So I'm glad to see that involving by our employees.
Yes, and I think there were several other groups from the school, as well as just the community. So I'm very proud of Lee County for what they've done. And I would like to congratulate the golf team. They were undefeated and have done so well and worked hard. And just lift them up in prayer for Monday. Really hope to do well in the state once again. And I'd like to congratulate Thomas Walker Golf Team, one district, and they have a player that will be representing in the state golf championship with their region.
Yeah, just kind of decked out what they've said already. Congrats to Lee. Wish them well Monday at state. Hope that they can bring home a second, two-in-a-row state championship back to Lee County. Congratulations to Thomas Walker and the golf team there. They had a good season, a good run. Wish Mr. Saylor well and Luke, when he goes to state. Welcome on board to our student reps. Good to have you all. Look forward to working with you. And yeah, thank you to Flatwoods, Thomas Walker. And I know that there's several other groups in the school system that have taken a lot of supplies. I don't, I don't think we realized just how fortunate we were to avoid what's happened to them. I know, I was talking with a couple of folks that delivered stuff from Thomas Walker, and they said these neighborhoods are going to be four to five months without power. And that's an hour away from here, and it's just very sad. So our thoughts and prayers go out to all of them tonight as well.
Any other board member have anything to say? Okay, under the consent agenda, A, approval of minutes from the September 12, 2024 regular meeting; B, approval of claims and expenditures; C, approval of updated workers' compensation panel of physicians; D, approval to change the date of colodoscope to April the 17, 2025; E, approval of field trip, Lee County Career Technical Center, Cindy Garrett; DECA pair trip to Charlotte, North Carolina; 11-15, 2024, Lee County Career Technical Center, Beth Shell; National FFA Convention, Indianapolis, Indiana; 10-22, 24; F, approval of updates to Head Start Policies and Procedures Manual; G, approval of disposal of surplus property for school board policy; D, N, disposal of surplus items; H, authorize the division superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between October the 10, 2024 through November the 14, 2024. Do you hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do you hear a second? Second. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports of the board? Do we have any reports of the board?
I want to add one thing. Thank you to Mr. Dean, Ms. Belcher, and everyone who's had a hand in the new additions of all the new playground equipment through our elementary schools. We were able to do a ribbon cutting yesterday at Rose Hill, and the kids absolutely loved it. And so both of my kids that were, that are still in elementary school, they come home and they crash. They're done. So, so, so thank y'all for all your hard work and help making that possible.
Okay, now we have reports of the student representatives.
Madam Chair, I don't know which one wants to go first.
Which one wants to go first? Good job. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to be here tonight representing Thomas Walker High School. I thank you for being a great honor. Thank you for allowing us to have the chance to report even from our schools from the student perspective. I would like to first introduce myself. My name is John Frederick. I'm a senior at Thomas Walker and an active member of many clubs. I take pride in being part of these clubs and the opportunities they present me with to help my community. This month, the clubs at Thomas Walker came together and helped work the community more than ever. The devastation caused by Hurricane Helene compelled many leaders at the school to come together and gather donations for victims affected by this devastation. Clubs combined their donations and successfully gathered totes full of baby products, toiletries, cleaning supplies, medical supplies, non-perishable foods, utilities. We had so many donations that we filled a 12-person van with all the seats removed and a small SUV. Ms. Denise Carter, Ms. Julie Redinger, Ms. Adam Dean, Ms. Holly Dean, all graciously delivered these donations on Tuesday to Arlington, Tennessee. Clubs haven't just been focused on hurricane relief. They've also been and plan to work with their community in Lee County. Tonight, Betty Club is volunteering at Edeldo Middle School to help out at their fall festival. FCAA has volunteered to make stuffed monsters for kids at Rose Hill Elementary School. The club went in September to let the kids draw their monsters. Using these drawings, students in FCAA design and sew stuffed monsters. The club will return later this month to deliver their stuffed monsters in time for Halloween. FCAA is also planning projects to help the community. The club has began making cards and will deliver these cards on October 17 to Lee Health and Rehab Center. Thomas Walker is devoted to its community and is making an impact on it. Thomas Walker is also steadfast in making an impact on the students. This past Tuesday, students at Thomas Walker had the honor to speak with Morgan Griffith, who represents Virginia, Virginia's ninth district in the House of Representatives. The official reason for his visit was to deliver our flag that had been floated over the Capitol. Students have greatly appreciated the renovations that the school has recently received next to the school board. One of these renovations was the bathrooms. The students, including myself, couldn't have been more thrilled when they walked in at the beginning of the year to our refurbished bathrooms. Thomas Walker has also had a recent renovation of gym roof. So far, they have finished the waterproof ceiling and plan to install solar panels. I would also like to report on the new teacher who will join the pioneers. This year, we've had the pleasure of welcoming Ms. Jacqueline Polly, Ms. Mr. Ben Watson, and Ms. Rose Martin. Mr. Watson is teaching econ and personal finance along with government. He has fit right into our school as if he's always been there. Ms. Polly's enthusiastic entrance has renewed a love for family and consumer science classes, and G actually has a waitlist for her classes next semester. Ms. Martin is the new teacher for agricultural classes. She's done a great job in keeping her students engaged. We're really, we're really happy to have these teachers. They fit right in. I would like to thank the board and Mr. Dean for allowing me the privilege of speaking to you all tonight. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to the students of Lee County. I realize that you are often met with more criticism than gratitude, but you are most definitely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and welcome to our board.
Yeah, so good evening, everybody. My name is Riley Crabtree. I'm a senior at Lee High School. I'm a part of various clubs and organizations. I serve as the Student Government Association President, as well as the Virginia 4-H President, and I'm involved in DECA, FBLA, Science Club, and Pep Club. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Dean and the board for allowing me the opportunity and the privilege to serve in this position as kind of a student advisor. I think it's going to be a great addition to the school board. So things that have been happening at Lee High, our Student Government Association, we are planning a movie night on the Lee High School football field for October the 29th. That is just allowed to Lee High School students. We hosted one a couple of weeks ago. It was a great success. We had it in the gym. We watched Top Gun Maverick. So everybody seemed to really enjoy that. So we're going to, we're going to hope to display a Halloween movie. Our FBLA officers are going to attend the Napoleon Hill Training Conference on October the 29th as well. DECA, FBLA, and our Science Club, they are currently, they have accepted donations and are still accepting donations to take to victims of Hurricane Helene. They've already filled like truck, truck fulls, and there's cases of water sitting in one of our teachers' classrooms awaiting to be transported. DECA also, they collected and delivered snacks to cancer centers because the cancer centers try to provide snacks for their patients to kind of eat while they're receiving their chemotherapy. So we delivered, we collected those and delivered those, and the students then received community service hours for those who brought snacks. Our FFA Club is attending the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, at the end of the month, October the 22nd through the 24th. And that's all I have. There we go.
Okay, thank you, Riley, and welcome.
And Madam Chair, I hope Riley doesn't get mad at me, but he is the student who reached out to me about the possibility of us doing this, and he kind of got that ball rolling, and then with your all's support. So I'm glad Lee High did nominate him just to do that. And that was without me putting any pressure on anyone. His name was the one I got. So very proud to have him and John both. And I think you can see why they were picked, that they're two high schools, how well they speak and how involved they are at the two schools.
Okay, our next item is reports of the division superintendent.
Madam Chair, first for enrollment. We ended September with 2,700, I mean, 788 students. We were down 10 from August and down 11 from this time last year. But we built the budget on 2730, so we're still in good shape. I'll have to report to the county administrator again that we're still above our projections. So, you know, if we continue that, we may have to have a little talk about our budget in the future. Hurricane Helene, I think you all know, I notified you all that we were going to cancel school on that Friday when it hit. I think that was good because, I mean, you all know how many trees came down, the power was affected. You know, we had thousands of people without power and water. And then they needed some more time to get the power restored and water to everyone. So that's why we missed that Monday and Tuesday. The Wednesday and Thursday, we actually went on a delay, and the reason we did that was the power crews were still out. And the fog that came, trying to have our bus drivers battle the fog, along with avoiding VDOT and the power companies, I just didn't think that was what was in the best interest of everyone. But I did think it was in the best interest to get everybody back to school. So we went on those delays. But I would like to thank Powell Valley Electric, Old Dominion Power, VDOT, who worked 12-hour shifts to try to get everything swinged up, the power crews that came in here from everywhere else, Governor Yonkin for declaring that emergency declaration, the governor's office who reached out to us to see if we needed anything, the Department of Education who reached out to us, Dr. Coons, the state superintendent, who reached out multiple times to make sure we had everything that we needed, Robbie Wright at the county office. We talked several times to make sure, you know, we're keeping up with how many people are still without power. And then, like you all said, the community that just came together. Lee County's not a wealthy community when you compare it to other communities in Virginia, but I think we went above and beyond to try to raise things to help our neighbors who are in pretty bad shape. And, you know, it's not just outside of the state. I talked to Kelly Wilmore, who's the superintendent in Grayson County, and they're not coming back to school till Monday. They've been out since then. It looked a lot like the pictures you all see on TV with the roads washed out. And he sent me one, talking about the new playground at Rose Hill, he sent me one picture that you could see the top of the slide at one of the schools. It's the water. That's all you could see of it. So just want to give you all an update on that. And then when the governor declared that emergency declaration, it opens up a code section that I reached out to the state superintendent and asked her for forgiveness for the days and the hours that we missed due to that. And we got back the official waiver. There's 20.5 instructional hours that will be forgiven for Lee County Public Schools. So we do not have to make up the time that we missed for the hurricane, those three days, and then those two days of delays. So I'm sure that students, teachers, and everybody will be excited about that. But she did sign off on that, so we've got that declaration approved. Yes, for funding, I'm glad to report that all of that funding has been encumbered. There was, I think, Belcher, tell me if I'm wrong, of the 17-plus million dollars, we gave back $5,000 that was, the way they had worded it, you had to give it to certain staff, and we couldn't figure out a way to give it because it would have came down to like very minimal money. And the way they worded it, we just couldn't get everybody to qualify. But all of that money has been encumbered. So I want to thank Ms. Belcher, Ms. Moore, Ms. Willis, and anybody that's helped us utilize that funding. I think you all see what we've done with it. I think you all see what we've done with it. Um, some of the items that we've bought, we still don't have installed yet, the playgrounds, we're still getting those, we're getting the elementary schools, some of the bathroom fixtures are at the schools, we just don't have them, uh, installed. A number of buses tomorrow?
Monday.
Monday. Monday, the, I think we have six, seven buses showing up at the bus shop Monday that we have already purchased. We were just that long getting them, um, to, to modernize the fleet. But, uh, Ms. Belcher has done a wonderful job, Ms. Willis, Ms. Moore getting the reimbursement, but, uh, it's been a task, but we've, I'm not going to say we didn't, didn't, didn't enjoy it, because, I mean, the money, it really helped Lee County and it helped us get through this process with, uh, COVID and everything. Um, operations update, you have that in your packet, I'd be more glad to update you on those, but two things, we do have all of the HVACs installed at Elkhorn and at Dryden. They just have a little cosmetic work, and then I think they're going to start on the units at Thomas Walker. Um, transportation update, like I said, we've got those new buses coming in, so, that school buses have been running good. Um, I think I saw our new activity bus, which is just for the county, the other day when we had the pro arts at, um, Lehigh, we used it to transport some of the students, so transportation's going well. I would ask you all, um, maybe for some guidance, we need to do the school calendar again. The development of the school calendar, I will tell you, that is one of the things I dread more than anything. Um, 600-plus employees trying to make everybody happy is not the easiest thing to do. Um, what we've done in the past, if you all are good with it, we can continue, is those communication, uh, meetings, and then I may get some input from their students as well, but, um, go through that process so they can reach out to the people at their schools to see if we can come up with a calendar that I'll say most people can agree upon. Um, I'll guarantee you, not everyone will agree upon whatever calendar we, we produce, but, uh, if you all are good, we'll probably continue that process unless you all have any guidance on changes there. Um, the next, I can't even count how many items they are here. October is the month that we have more, um, awareness and more days and more month recognitions than any of the other months throughout the, the year, but I'll go through these. October is bullying prevention month, and there's a proclamation in there that we did on behalf of Lee County Public Schools about bullying prevention. Um, you know, we need to have safe schools and none of our students need to be worried about being bullied while they're at schools, so October is bullying prevention month. October the 2nd was, uh, National Custodian Day. We have wonderful custodians at all of our buildings and, uh, you know, they work hard every day to make sure our facilities are clean. You all know we've got buildings that date back to 1937, but, you know, I think they're as good as some of the buildings that people have that have been built in the last few years. So we're proud of our custodians. October the 7th through the 11th is Virginia Farm to School Week. I think it's important to students and everybody understands where, what we eat comes from, the farms, and we still have a lot of farmers in, in, in Lee County. Um, you know, you, it just don't show up at the store. It has to come from somewhere and it's important that people understand that when you plant and, and you grow stuff, I mean, I grew up on a farm, I still live on a farm and I, I enjoy it, and I think it's important that we remember where things come from. October 7th through 13th is Dyslexia Awareness Week. Dyslexia is a disability that impacts people from their ability to read and write, so, you know, if, we make sure that we identify any students that have this disability and give them the resources they need to be successful. The whole month of October is Learning Disability Awareness Month. Um, a lot of students in Lee County have learning disabilities, and we do everything we can to provide them the services and the resources that they have. We have wonderful special ed teachers and programs all across Lee County. October is also Head Start Awareness Month. Ms. Baker, the team at Head Start does a wonderful job with our preschool program and the services that we provide our three and four-year-olds in Lee County. October the 6th was National Coaches Day. I think it's important that, you know, while all students don't play sports, those that are involved and understand what they benefit from those coaches. I know I had wonderful coaches in the years that I played, Mr. Kredl, when I played golf all the way through. Um, I coached at Lehigh. It's, it's, it's an honor and a responsibility when you're a coach to, to help these young people, so I think it's important that we recognize them. October the 6th through the 12th is Fire Prevention Week. Um, I think Ms. Crabtree's still here. We know how important fire prevention is. Uh, we had the fire, you know, down at Flatwoods that we ended up losing that one Head Start building. Um, she could probably tell you all about fire prevention back here.
We practice it regularly.
It, it's very important, and it's important that people practice it at home as well with those smoke detectors and everything they can do to help if something happens at home. Lights on After School Day is October the 24th. You know, we still have some after-school tutoring going on, after-school programs that our students are involved in. That's important. October the 10th, which is today, uh, World Mental Health Day. I think all of us know that we have a lot of people who have mental health issues and mental health, uh, things that are going on, and COVID has caused a whole lot more of that, so it's important, I think we recognize that. October the 14th through the 18th is National School Lunch Week. Want to say thank you to all of our cafeteria staff and everyone that's involved in the school nutrition program. Um, I know, kind of like a calendar, not everything we do every day in the cafeteria everybody loves, but our people do a great job serving our students and making sure they have breakfast and lunch, and I'd also like to say that on those, not the Friday when we canceled, but the Monday and Tuesday when we canceled after the hurricane, we served over, I think it was 1,250 meals to people who came to the schools to get those, so those people who came in to provide that food for those people who might not have had electricity or were suffering at that time, we really want to appreciate them. October the 21st through the 25th is School Bus Safety Week. Um, we have had an accident this year, uh, had the one up the drive when the school first started, but, you know, it's important that people understand the school buses are out there and to watch when those students are getting picked up and, uh, dropped off in the afternoon. October the 23rd through the 31st is National Red Ribbon Week. This is drug abuse awareness. Uh, it's the most, it's the biggest national program in the world for, uh, drug abuse awareness, so I think all the schools typically do something for that. October is National Principal Month. We have a wonderful group of principals that I love working with every day. I think, uh, Mr. Smith, Ms. Crabtree are two of them that are here tonight, um, so we appreciate everything you all do and all that your colleagues do. October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. Um, I know I sent the board a message one day that, uh, we had an attempted attack on our network here at the school system. Uh, I say attempted because Ms. Sumter, who's back in the back, and her team on the technology side, everything that they have in place held, and we did not have a, uh, they did not get through the firewall, but it's important that, uh, everybody understands how that works, and, you know, when you get emails that you don't know where they come from, don't open them. And usually you can tell, Ms. Sumter sends out something all the time about, really look at these emails, because usually they're not perfect. They mess up on an email address or, you know, what they call somebody, um, but if you have something like that, especially in our network, just let her know and they can look into it. And then lastly, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I think almost everyone has had someone in their family that has been impacted by breast cancer awareness, so we just make everyone aware of that, and hopefully one day we can eradicate that problem. Uh, Madam Chair, that's all I have for my reports tonight.
Okay, under unfinished business, A, action if any to approve athletic handbook that was given out to Ms. Smith.
Madam Chair, I gave that to you all last, last month as a draft. Um, Mr. Smith's here tonight, I think he contributed to that. If you had any questions, he probably can answer them as well as I could, but we're asking that you approve that athletic handbook for both Lehigh and Thomas Walker. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them all. Point to Mr. Smith here and ask him to answer them.
You good on everything in it?
We're good.
Good enough for me. I'll make a motion.
Coach, Ms. Cooper and I, we, we work together on that and, and Mr. Mullins and everyone involved. We, we think it's been consistent across the table with Thomas Walker and Lehigh students, um, so we, we think it's a good, a good plan in place.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Action discussion items. A, action if any to approve easements for public service authority PSA at Lee High School.
Madam Chair, they sent this to me, and I think, uh, Karen, did you put that in their packets? So, I had sent that to Mr. Sturgill to look over. What it is, is I think it's an interconnect from Okanita Project to the Milch Chapel Project. It needs to have, they need to have an easement which will go from the fore lane on that side of the road up by Lee High School. They have asked that we grant that. Um, Mr. Sturgill has, I think, looked at it from the legal side, um, with his blessing and your all's approval, I would ask that you all approve that so we can get that back to the PSA and they can move forward with that process to connect that water system.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Huns, would you read the code for closed session?
I'll move them here into closed session to discuss personnel in the Code of Virginia Section 2.2 dash 3711A1 to discuss student discipline in the Code of Virginia Section 2.2 dash 3711A2, pending and threatening litigation in the Code of Virginia Section 2.2 dash 3711A7, yes, and acquisition of a parcel of property in the Code of Virginia Section 2.2 dash 3711A3.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now in closed session.
If anyone's here for closed session, if you will.